We have a plan manager, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order at 6:03 PM. And it is noted that our Chair and Vice Chair of the Commission are not present, so at this time, I would ask the Commission to temporarily by consensus appoint a Chair. Good evening, everyone. Oh, that's.
How about you? Good evening. Do we want to decide who wants to just do the first three items, and then we'll decide who's going to be Chair? I don't mind if. While he's in the first two. So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Hollister Plan Commission on February 6, 2025. The meeting is now called to order. Can I do this? Staff, can we please have a heart?
Honey, Masoni.
Yeah.
Commissioner Damian Perez.
Present.
Commissioner Carter Torresuna.
Yeah.
And as noted, Steve Belong's absent today.
Thank you. And Commissioner, which one would you like to name as an appointment? Thank you.
I do leave.
And at this time, we're going to submit our Fighting Commission Chair and Vice Chair for the calendar year 2025. Are there any nominations for appointment of a Fighting Commission Chair for calendar year 2025?
I would. I would nominate Stephen. He's going to be Chair, so. If this is really the same person you're doing. Does he have to be?
I don't think so. I think he got appointed without being there last time, so.
How long has he been here?
I think he's been Chair for about a year and a half.
Hmm, so is it a version of second?
Yes, so we would ask for a motion to approve Steve Belong as the Chair and then a second nomination.
So is there a motion to approve Commissioner Belong as Fighting Commission Chair for calendar year 2025?
Yes.
And is there a second? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. And then are there any nominations for appointment of Fighting Commission Vice Chair for calendar year 2025? I would like to nominate myself.
Yes.
I'm assuming that's a motion to approve and a second, is that good? Do you know? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. But if the person who's supposed to be Chair is not here, then you will share on the question, what would you like to swap? Are you good? Alright. Alright. And do we have, so we need to approve the minutes for the October 24, 2024 meeting? Do we have any questions from the Commission? And staff, do we have any public comments?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this item?
Yes.
I think so. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 No opposed, no abstained, motion carries. Alright, and next item is item five, public hearings. Site and architectural review 2022-8B Park Street, Hollister Farms Shop 3. May we have the staff report? Yes, this item will be decided by senior fire enter.
Good evening, tonight we're looking at a site architectural review for a project that's common referred to as Shop Street in the Hollister Farms Shopping Center. The applicant is proposing to construct a new 7,200 square foot retail building to accommodate up to three tenants, one of which will have a drive-through restaurant. The, as proposed on their plans, there are three tenant spaces right now. So there is a 2,900 square foot tenant space, a 2,400 square foot tenant space, and a 1,600 square foot tenant space that has the drive-through as well. There's also a small area attached to the building, which is for the fire. There are 41 parking spaces aligned for this development, 32 on the site, as well as nine parking spaces off-site on an adjacent property, which they can use for their shared property. This diagram shows the project location. The project location is a colorful diagram that you see right there. To the left of on that screen, you can see an existing building. That is the satellite called here. Directly to the left over to the east is the new Wendy's building. And there's also some vacant areas surrounding that, as well as some commercial space to the side. This blow-up shows the site plan for the project. The project does meet all of the setback requirements of zoning warrants. There are two entrances and exits to the area off of East Park Street. As you can see from this diagram, there is landscaping throughout. With parking to the rear covered by the building from the street, and then a drive-through that wraps around from parking area around the building to the other side with the drive-through located as far away as possible to allow for stacking of them. The elevations of the building have been designed with a modern architectural approach. There are several styles and features to the building, including stucco, cement, fire panels, accents such as awnings and brick, as well as a variety of. These are the two of the elevations. And then a. The project was reviewed for compliance with both the general plan and the zone warrants, and staff found that it was compliant with both the policies of the general plan, as well as all the requirements of incoming districts, so for example, parking requirements, setbacks, lot coverage, FAR, and other requirements of the zone. This project is considered to be an infill development, so under the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, it will afford the renewal. Staff is recommending that you adopt a resolution approving the SNA for shops three. However, you do have four options. You could adopt the resolution approving, as recommended by staff. You could adopt a resolution denying the project, or you could adopt a resolution, sorry, findings modified by the client question, or modify the conditions of approval if you trust yourself. You can deny the proposed project, or you can continue and direct staff to provide additional information. I think this is our presentation, and I'll start it, and sorry about the interruption.
Thank you. Do we have questions in the Commission?
Yeah.
I. New.
Alright.
So I, because this is new to me, the maps and everything, I went to see the space myself, so I can get a visual. And. And so just if you can tell me again where the drive-through, because when you're, so if you're facing the the development that's already. Is it the, where Smash Burger and everything is? The, the street, what is that, Park Street?
Yeah.
There's a. So there's a, when you're coming out of the new development, that this one, there's a barrier cement and it's. I could see how it's difficult for, because I was trying to maneuver around in and out of, like just between the two shopping centers. And I'm like, I go all the way down the Rancho, the school, make it you to come back, you know? So is, so I'm just imagining, I think it's great, we need businesses, but I'm wondering, is there like, oh, is there going to be a better flow of traffic? And I know that this street, put it up in the frame, where is it, the East Park and? It's McCray and Prospect, they run there. So that one, I know that that one's still closed, right? The road right there, so just kind of envisioning, you know, where the drive-through will be and how the flow of traffic.
So. Unfortunately, I wasn't aware, but if you look on the map and you see this little line of cars that goes around the building. The, that's all where the cars are, that's the stacking for you to pick up your food. So. Superway from the cities, I don't. Many cars, but here's 10. So they're stacking for 10. So once someone goes, the line obviously. The line where the entrance is, is designed so that doesn't keep the people trying to get into the facility, right? Because you don't want cars moving around unsafely. And then you have the right in, right out on East.
Yes.
Left side, I believe, as well as the existing entrance that's more. The existing entrance we can gray, and then the right entrance. All of these have been designed and reviewed with the city engineer to make sure that there are no traffic impacts. There is a condition of approval in there, which discusses key information once you get a tenant, because I don't have a tenant.
Hi, that was my next question.
So if this is. Starbucks, that is one type of use. If it is McDonald's, there is another type. If there was an In-N-Out, that's intensive. So until we have that sort of information, this in general would work, for most times, right? If someone came to us and proposed something that was not within those confines, or we felt that there would be a problem, that condition of approval allows us to work with them.
That makes sense. Thank you for explaining that. Because I wasn't sure if it was already somebody coming in.
Maybe you don't have any tenant identified yet, so it is just a shelter.
Okay. And then the other question is, is there, could we, if we were to approve, could there be something in there about looking at that cement block that's in between? Or is that a different request or no?
So the way that the Hollister Farms Shopping Center was approved, so that includes these on the mark, which is where your existing Quik Rack and the brand that's playing in Wendy's, that's the north side, the south side is a built outside of Dutch Bros and TJ Maxx. The, the subdivision that improved East Park Street and included those medians was approved as a whole, and those are a part of the traffic. So part of this will hopefully improve some of the traffic, because this, the white driveway that you see that's going in between the proposed shops three that we're looking at and the Wendy's that's under construction, that is opposite the branch, the one that you can turn left in and out on in front of, between Dutch Bros and the TJ Maxx buildings. That's the opposite side of there. So this one in the center that will be constructed with this product and with the Wendy's will allow left turns on both, but the ones on the further side, because of the location of Highway 25 and the confusing publicated intersection at Prospect, the corner of Craig, they can only be right in, right outs. But it will connect through, so this white on the top that loops around and continues to Wendy's, there'll be some internal circulation as well as these get built out on that north side. So hopefully, traffic will get better, especially if we continue to vote this.
Thank you, thank you for that. I will now open up the hearing, this is right, yes. I will now open the public hearing at 6:17. Is that correct? And staff, do we have a presentation for the active there on the site?
You do not have a presentation.
We do. Oh, we do. Yes, this is one of the ones. The applicant has prepared a list of these. I'm going to join here with the sending partners. To present you our proposal about them, located at East Park Street. And this is the North Side of that West End. First. Firstly, I would give you a brief overview of our company. You know, just a quick summary of our proposal about them. We, pockets, it's a major network and commercial development and property management. And done by Gary Parkinson and Martin Stanley Sales. We have nearly five decades of experience and lots of family. We sell choice free hospitality and storage. And over the years, we have developed about 200 inventory products across from each state. So going on more than 40 years, we've. And we are passionate about our own homes, opportunities, and business spaces. Very deep, very, very. And so a quick background between our history, with the senior officer, we began the battle in Hollister in 2011, which is 14 years ago. And this proposed about them, but it's actually reported by the city. And, you know, to provide essential service to the local community. And this project will enhance the quality of life. Business opportunities to the local residents. And a bread was to expand the retail options for local residents. You know, reducing the needs to travel to convert the shopping. Since 2011, we have been actively developing this property, starting with Walgreens, and later I mean TJ Maxx, and other retailers. At that time, it was agreed that the city would have the opportunity to review, as well as to approve this proposed development when the time came. And here we are today, to fulfill the promise, to deliver the proposed development established between the city and us. So the quick project overview, which we can start already. It's a citywide centered project, and it is in the commercial shopping system in the city of Austin, Austin, Ohio. And. First, the time is. 7,200 square foot shopping, clear through the tides, as you can see on the slide. And on the window, it's where the drive-through. And we are also providing 41 parking spaces, including 32 parking spaces on site. And the original parking space, which is in Fort Show, which we signed with our company, right, with the seller that helped us. As well, as we are providing 16% more than the development standards on the asset. So here is a quick timeline. After receiving the comments from the city back in the 2014, we have a meeting with the city when they come to last year, and, you know, those issues and comments. And we said that I was, when I set clients in June, on July, October, and the latest summer, November, and today we have all the combination. So here's a site, which establishes, and we still have the machines facing the north. South. And you can see the custom art installation, but it was in concert. These are the last. Thank you. Good for you. And snap. We're going to, I just wanted to add, we appreciate the time, you know, staff. And the list of your conditions, and we were respectful of the class that the commission brought to your group. Thank you. Staff, do we have any public comments on the side?
You do not have any public comments.
I will close the public hearing at 6:23. Commission, are there any discussion or deliberation? I think the only thing, I think is the timing, right? This is good, it's what we want. I think I agree, you know, many of the delivered, you know, it's hard when you have the towel outside for different things, so this is good. I just wonder, is it normal to create drive-throughs without knowing who's coming in?
And so the city Hollister, we see a lot of shell buildings come through. What we did with the applicant team is they did prepare to the analysis, and staff is pretty critical of making sure that the drive-through would work, because we did not have an assigned tenant, so we couldn't establish that. So as Eric mentioned in the presentation, we do have a condition that isn't necessarily a standard condition, where we get an opportunity to review each tenant before they go in, so we can make sure that we're consistent with the parking that's proposed, as well as making sure that we're having a standard drive-through client. And I will say that the drive-through, I believe I counted it, is about 15 cars queuing before you even get into that interior drive aisle, is significantly more than the city's requirement, which is only six. So we were, we understood that as well, and had the same concerns, and there was a separate queueing process.
Thank you for that. And just for the parking, I don't know what size they are, but considering we're in Hollister, and a lot of us have big large cars and trucks, because the other part, the other side is, you know, so just, you know, I don't know.
Though, though we are standard size outlined in the code, I'm not sure, but if there's a distinction, and some of them are compact, but they do meet the requirements of our.
That's really good, and a temple for us who have big kids. And then there was some artwork in the buildings. Is there any consideration of the local art?
I don't know that there was a consideration for local art specifically. It's, it's probably going to be similar to the art that is in the rest of the subdivision, and that whole artwork pieces that matches their aesthetic.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve this item?
I have one I'd like to ask. I'd like to ask for a payment for the, we want to be thanked for the 10 million million investment. You really will want a payment, or?
It's probably unlikely, the, the first tenants will probably want the ability to customize the shells to the way that they need for their business, and because it's not confirmed, we could be looking at a restaurant, we could be looking at a coffee shop, we could be looking at a bank, we could be looking at a retail store, so those are going to have different requirements, and they'll go through a building department. What will happen is they'll be able to submit all for the building as a whole to get built, and then individually each tenant's face, as the tenants are assigned and come in, will get an instant alternate improvement that will be committed as well. The agreement between the time and Hockley's company as to who will upfront those costs may be different.
Would those tenants opening here, or is it?
They will not be able to make exterior changes to this site architectural review within very minor authority of staff, otherwise it will have to come back, but what it mentioned for design to do this, without so too now is there.
Is there a motion to approve this item?
Okay. I second you.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained, motion carries. 5.2 Amendment to the Master Sign Program for the Heritage Plaza Shopping Center, MSP 2024-2, to allow a different sign type and number of signs for the Brass Tap Restaurant on 1701 Airline Highway in the General Commercial DC zoning district, ABN 057-070-067. You have a stack of quote.
One second.
Brass Tap is the shopping center located on the Airline Highway. There are a few tenants in there, mostly some of the Brass Tap, but there's also the Goodwill Store, and several other smaller tenants. Brass Tap has submitted, previously submitted an application for a sign. They requested two signs, as you can see on the shrine, one on the parquet wall at the back of the restaurant, and then an oval-shaped sign above the entryway, both are on the front, but the front elevation. Here's the blow-up of which is. There is a new. The oval sign is, is on the building right now. However, there is a master sign program called at Heritage Plaza Shopping Center. What a master sign program means to do is ensure that there's consistency in design between all the signs within a shopping center. So there is cohesion between both the architecture of building and then the signs are cohesive too. So for example, a shopping center may only require one sign per tenant, and they can only be made out of metal letters that maybe fits in with the design. In this case, for Heritage Plaza, the site program is, is older, and there are specific requirements based on number of signs as well as design. And because of that, Brass Tap did not fit in with the master sign program, to allow the signs that they want, but requiring amendment to the master sign program. The proposal came in, staff alerted them that they need to amend the master sign program, which they did, then applied for, and really tonight is looking at amended master sign program for Brass Tap only for right now, because that restaurant is in operation right now. Staff really has no concerns with the size of the sign, the design of the sign, and date, the oval one at least is out there right now, so you can see. Now, the sign, as I mentioned, is different from the rest of the shopping center, which has a specific master sign program. But that building will be changed very soon, hopefully. As part of Brass Tap, there was two phases to the project. There was the Brass Tap facade remodel, which took over the old Red Day Shopping Center, or the Red Day Garden Center, and added on to it and constructed a new restaurant with a mission-style, Spanish-style design. And the rest of the buildings within the shopping center will also get an overhaul, so that their facade is similar to the design of Brass Tap. So this is what this, this slide is showing, is the new overall design of the shops. With this new design, the applicant will have to come back and amend their master sign program, because the old master sign program doesn't fit in with this design, nor does it fit in with the specific locations identified in it. Until they acknowledge it, although we have amended it again, but they wanted to take posit this point, just to allow Brass Tap to recover, since they had completed construction and are operating, so that they can have their signs. And then they have acknowledged and also extended some of the approval, that they'll come in for the rest of the shopping center, so we'll have more coverage in this.
Okay.
Based on that, any conditions of approval, staff is recommending approval of the signs, because they are well-designed, and they are sized appropriately for the area in which they are located, and it fits in well with the future designs. And that includes our visit, we have found, that's one that we thought we wanted to.
Thank you. Do we have questions from the Commission?
I don't. So did you get any complaints or any comments from the public about? Signs ugly, the sign doesn't match?
I heard nothing about the sign. It has been up for several months.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing at 6:32. Staff, do we have a presentation from the applicant on the side?
Yes, you do.
Good evening, members of the committee. My name is Mike Vino. I just want to spend just a real quick couple of minutes here and kind of like to note what this is all about. We're here tonight to follow up on a signage application made by the Brass Tap Restaurant last July. A restaurant that opened this past November, located at the corner of Airline Highway and Sunny Road Road. We, Mike and Tracy Vino. We, Mike and Tracy Vino, current owners of the Heritage Plaza Shopping Center. We purchased the shopping center back around two thousand and fifteen and have been working away at improvements with an end goal of it being one of the nicest centers in Hollister, where long time residents, local builders, are very excited about this project. The planning commission has already approved a master design front architectural change to the building, which will vastly improve the look. Building permits have already been pulled. The first phase of this project was the brass tap addition. We will begin reworking the smaller building in the spring, followed by the larger building, Redding, Goodwill and O'Reilly's later on. We are currently being held to the signage requirements of an old signage program that we had really nothing to do with. It was tasked in two thousand and eleven by the old owners. We were unaware of it until recently, until it was recently found by the planning department. We fully understand that we need to create and submit a new signage program which will work hand in hand with our planned architectural changes. We are working on that now and we'll share some of it tonight. The previous owner signage master does not work with the new architectural work, uh, rework. The signage for the brass tap is incorporated into our proposed new master signage program once completed. We're in the middle of a process right now with the signage company. But in the interim, since this could take months to finalize and get approval, we're asking for their approval now for the brass tap signage only. We're requesting an amendment to the old signage program approving this submitted signage for the brass tap with the caveat that we will also conform to the master signage program for the new architectural facades. This, this business is bringing a lot to Hollister. It is currently the number one brass tap in the whole nation as far as sales. It has been open since, uh, November with no approved signage, even though the application process started last summer. Some of you remember we were here for a special meeting in November, but there was no forum, so we added another two months to the suspending process. The signage as proposed for this major tenant addresses the two different architectural plans and high, plans, the planes and heights. One at parking level and the second high up addressing the street views. The design is aesthetically pleasing and fits perfectly into our new look. The brass tap plan has been designed to fit both the existing and the new architectural facades. It also conforms to the city's or, uh, city zoning ordinance regarding signage. Any fans, we appreciate your help and understanding so that Nader Habib, who's here with us tonight, can finally put some signage and continue to see the fruition of the years of hard work, planning and expense, and bringing a great new restaurant and gathering spot to our community. And I do have a little, um, slideshow there I'd like to show. So this is the first part of brass tap that, um, uh, was finalized last November. Okay, there we go. So a-again, this is a little bit redundant, but we purchased the plaza back in somewhere around two fifty and surprised a big retail shop, including restaurants, drugstore, um, auto supply, banking, and brand new, et cetera. We've been working slowly, revi-revitalizing the shopping center with fresh new paint, lighting, fences, garbage can, and refreshing the landscape. A large architectural facade change was approved and permitted and ready to start in two thousand and twenty-five. We're currently working on a new master signage plan. That's the small building on the other side, um, and it's, it's kind of a, I really think, um, this is what I've already done through. Um, but it gives you some idea of kind of the signage and how it's kind of, you know, more cohesive and looks there today. That's what we got today. That's good looking, isn't it? Beautiful. Anyway, that's what we're kind of working on. Our goal is to update the design program. It's a new look. The plan includes lit cabinet signs for the four national retailers, usually required logos, their required logos and colors, while still utilizing the master signage details. Smaller retailers will have standardized wood knight slot signs. These signs are made of high density polyurethane material with DVC layers. Horizontal, well, horizontal bending and brays details tied all together. There we go. It gets a real quick look, because I know I'm past, of what, um, the shopping center is going to look like here and hope you're too much.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions for me?
I think, did we go to public comment?
So at this time, the commission, um, has an opportunity to answer your bio. If you had questions for the applicant, we'll help you ask that. And then at that time, we'll go to the rest of the public comment, everyone.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
No, it's fine.
I think it's exciting. I went by this again just to make sure you know, to prepare. And yes, I mean, the brass tap restaurant is like beautiful and then the rest is like, ee.
Not, not quite as beautiful, not quite as beautiful.
No, right, no offense to the businesses. It's just, you know, it's older and so I'm glad to hear that there's plans to renovate.
Excited about it.
Yeah, so that's exciting. And then the only other question, probably totally inappropriate, but you know, we get a drink at the brass tap. Totally kidding, we get fired. But, but, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and now do we have any, uh, public comment?
We do not have any public comments. However, we want to do, do know, want to note for the record that we have written comments for Mike and Tracy Vino and copies have been provided to the planning commission and copies are found in the lobby.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing at six thirty-nine. And we attempt commission, do you have any discussion or deliberation? I agree in the fact that it's local, you know, people and that we care about our community and it's, you know, improvements as much needed, right? Again, business and Hollister, so is there a motion to approve this item?
Yes.
The second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstaining, motion carries. Item five point three, master sign plan twenty twenty-four dash one, four hundred seventy-eight streets. Okay, we have staff report, sorry.
Yes. Um, so item five point three is another master sign program. This one is proposed for the four hundred and seventy industry project. And this is. So, kind of slides that I ordered, but it's going to show the location. This is our brand new building that is being built over on the corner of Fourth and San Benito Street with condominiums on the second of their floor and commercial tenant spaces on the ground floor. So what's proposed tonight is a master sign plan similar to the last. Our code requires a cohesive sign program for signs that have multiple commercial tenant spaces and ensure that it's aesthetically pleasing and those types of things. So tonight, the applicant has proposed a program that will allow six rectangular blade signs to be installed on the ground floor, one in each of the six tenant spaces, um, to, uh, have a cohesive sign program for the set. There will be signs located on all four sides of the building because there are tenant space accesses on all four sides. There'll be three on the San Benito Street side, one for the central location on the Four Street side, which is on the right side of the street here, one in the alley side between the Santa Dabo and Bruce building, and there is one that is in the central alleyway space between the Four Street block building and the community foundation building to the south. Here's just another set of elevations. This is the Four Street elevations of that central sign location. They're mounted above the doorways on the exterior most wall of the ground floor. Um, this is at the south for that near corner, um, tenant space. On the east side, this is facing San Benito Street with the three signs for the three tenant spaces. And finally, on the, um, what, the, the west side between Bruce building for that sent, that tenant space that has access on this side closest to West Street. Here's an image of what the blade signs will look like. They're a kind of modern rectangular metal sign. It is noted that one of the requests of this master sign program does, uh, request for a slightly larger sign than is permitted by standard code regulations, uh, which is within the planning commission's authority to allow a modification through this master sign program process. And so that is part of the approval tonight of the time, which I guess won't consider that. The bar cited largely. Um, the project was reviewed for compliance with our general plan. Our zoning ordinance, our sign codes must sound to be consistent and again, the planning commission has that authority to make that modification for those only regulations that are standard in their back end use. And, um, yeah, so they're two point six square feet as opposed to the two square foot. And tonight, staff is recommending that the planning person adopt the resolution approving master sign program twenty twenty-four dash one with the bindings and conditions contained in our draft resolution. However, you could also make any modifications to that, which is to deny the project or continue the grant. If you do want a permission, but I'm happy to answer any question.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the commission?
Yeah, it's a larger comments.
Uh, so it is, let me just make sure I'm saying the right thing. They are two point six square feet per sign, so they're twenty-five inches by fifteen inches. Um, and then in the downtown mixed use, and I apologize, I believe it said two square feet, but the downtown mixed use allows one square foot signage per linear foot of street frontage. So they're slightly larger, um, than that, that they are going to be consistent and the sign face will be that, that larger size. So it's, it's not, it's still pedestrian scale. It's not overwhelming to the building, but it is allowing a two point six square foot per sign as opposed to the one square foot, which is the current allowance.
Yeah, how close are those to the ground?
They are. Oh, there's my, my planner, who is the sign designer, who knows, on the cover of her head is.
I'm just worried, worried about people walking in. I mean, are they going to see clear or clear?
Yeah, so they're mounted relatively high. I, I don't know that it's actually in here, I haven't had a look at the plans, but they're not relatively high. They're even higher than the door frame because of the way that the facade is. Uh, they're above the archways and above the lights on, in the most, most places. So they're, they're mounted significantly high. They're not going to overhang and, yeah. Not over ten. I, I would say they're, I'll read between eight and ten.
Okay, and what's the standard for?
I have questions. I'll have to look at them.
I'm just worried about people walking by and just, you know.
Yeah, they, they were measured for clearance and they're consistent with the height. So the only exception from our, our ordinance that's being requested is the size, the physical dimensions of it. Otherwise, it's consistent with the ordinance.
Okay.
And I will now open the public hearing at six forty-six P M. Staff, do we have a presentation from the applicant on this item?
Yeah, I will do this.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jaron Del Cerdong, one of the principals, uh, that developed the project. Uh, it's a three story mixed use building, so it's pretty, uh, good sized building. Uh, we also constructed the community foundation building next door. So I think, uh, the downtown's really looking good. Uh, the master sign program that we're requesting, and we think it's consistent. The signs are, they go really well with the building. I think they're appealing. Um, they are a little bit modern, they're black. Uh, I don't know if you've driven by and taken a look at the signs, but, uh, they are up pretty high. I think the bottom of the sign is eight feet, so they're plenty high. Uh, they are consistent with the size of the building, uh, and they're very appealing, um, with, uh, uh, the consistency of the building. I think it looks, I think it looks fantastic. Anyway, do you have any questions for me?
You have any question?
No, thank you.
Thank you. The sign is nice and modern and brilliant. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment.
And I will close this public hearing at six forty-seven. Uh, any discussion or deliberation? And is there a motion on this item?
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
Second, and all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Item five point four, appeal twenty twenty-four dash three, Alexander Swank, regarding the location of fencing in the Armstead subdivision, may we have a staff report?
Okay, so item five point four is a, appeal twenty twenty-four dash three filed by Alexander Stilak regarding the Armstead subdivision and fencing location on lots one and two. Oh gosh, my file has been corrupted. Um, the subdivision, another image corrupted earlier when I was looking at it. Um, the subdivision, and I apologize for the screen, but this is at West Side Boulevard and South Street. It's the southwest corner that some people might be familiar with the somewhat recent cottages development. This is the property next door that's right up against West Side. It's proposed for fourteen homes. And the subject of this appeal is lots one and two, which is at the northernmost location of that fronting South Street, um, in the subdivision. Uh, here we go. Um, so you can see lots one and two, north is on the right side of your screen. They are the northmost, um, home lots. They face south into Patrick Drive and Lindsay Lane inside the subdivision, but they back into South Street. On July eighth of last year, the applicant did submit building permit applications to our building department for lot one, which is one thousand Patrick Drive, and lot two, which is ten ten Patrick Drive. And on July twenty-sixth, the city did return comments to the applicant on those building permit plans, including, among other things, there were other comments for missing information and other information that was needed. However, one of the comments, which is the subject of the appeal tonight, was that the location of the fences need to be identified on the plans. They were missing. And there was a note by local planning and engineering divisions that the engineering division must approve the fence location and it must be located outside of the ten foot public utility easement that is located on this, on the properties on the South Street side. To date, a recent amount has not been received in response to the city's comments on those. So this is the building's metal that was received for lot one. As you can see, it does not show fence, but there is that ten foot newly easement on the north side in the most rear yard of this lot. And then, um, also here is lot two, which is just the west of it. And this one is missing the ten foot newly easement, but it is, it does extend across here and the fence is not shown. The comment that was provided regarding the fence comes from section sixteen, seventeen sixteen L five O of our municipal code. This is an excerpt from the table. For properties that have a fence located within the ten foot street side setback on a corner lot, which includes the South Street rear yard of these properties, the maximum height of fences is allowed to be three feet, three feet tall within that ten foot setback. Otherwise, the city engineer can consider, um, a, a height of up to six feet. So raising the height of the fence within that ten foot setback, provided that it doesn't create a safety hazard and is consistent with easements and rights of way on the property. Additionally, this is an excerpt from our twenty nineteen adopted engineering standards and specifications, section at, at the bottom here. Um, sound walls and lock fences shall not be allowed in any public easement. So the comment to show the fence, as fences are required on the building permit, but the note that it should be setback, these fence feet from the property line and outside of the public utility easement on these lots was provided in, um, accordance with these codes. And. The applicant, following this, had several discussions with staff, um, concerns regarding the comment about the placement of the, of the fence. And engineering staff reviewed the individual condition of the site and did propose to the applicant an acceptable exception to the ten foot setback and to allowing the fence located within a public. And to allowing the fence located within a public utility easement. The reason for this is that on South Street. In the back of the sidewalk, uh, so you have the street right away, so the curb. Then you have a sidewalk and then you have a four and a half foot landscape strip. And that's where the property line is, the property line is not directly at the back of the sidewalk on South Street on these properties. So engineering did go after the site, they reviewed the circumstance, they reviewed the utilities that are located within the easement. And determined that the fence could be located ten feet from the back of the sidewalk, which is um. Four and a half or five and a half feet from the property line as opposed to ten. That was proposed to the applicant. And um, the applicant was in disagreement with that. Um, part of it too, this is the constructed house um, on Patrick Drive next door to the property and. This fence is located ten feet on the back of the sidewalk, so that's consistent with the neighboring fence as well. Um, I do not have an answer as to whether there's a public utility easement similar or not, it was a different subdivision, but the fences would be in line. So following the engineering division's proposal of this compromise, I'm in an acceptable exception, the applicant. Uh, appealed to reach out to our director at Rodden Howell, who's our assistant city manager and acting director of the community development department. And upon review of our staff and the applicant's decisions and, and questions. Uh, the city manager did, or assistant city manager did determine to interpret and agree with staff's interpretation of the municipal code and made a formal. Um, determination to the applicant on September sixth, in that regard, the full statement um, from that communication was included in your packet. It's around the page, but it is that staff, um, staff's, engineering staff's proposal to be five and a half feet. From the property line was acceptable and it combines with the. So in the city poster municipal code does allow for appeals to be filed, uh, for staff recommendations to the planning division. And the applicant did file a timely appeal on September seventeenth of the director's decision. And so that is what's here before you tonight, there were two main points of the appeal. Uh, so I will go through them and then I will go through the staff's response to those points. The first point of the appeal application was that lots one and two of Farmstead have been completed. The applicant understood that their rear fences along South Street would be located along their property lines. In response to this, um, but the staff. Uh, has indicated that the final map does include language that public utility easements shall be kept clear of all structures except for lawful fences. Um, in addition, during the review of the improvement plans and final map in twenty nineteen. Engineering staff did provide a comment letter to the applicant stating that they should remove the fence from the public utility easement. On the improvement plans for lot one and two, and they also indicated that the location of the fences will be reviewed at the time of plot plans. To keep a building permit approval, so that was in twenty nineteen, we only notified of this. And additionally, note twenty one on the final map, which is also conditioned with approval eighteen on the original approval of the Farmstead subdivision title of map. Does indicate that all residential fencing is subject to municipal code and shall be in sole importance. Um, and then finally, the municipal section that we discussed regarding the fencing requirements and the height location and management's ability to approve. Within that street sense that that has been in place since twenty fourteen with no changes, so that was available prior to the approval by the. Commission of the original entitlement. So in response to this first appeal point, um, staff believes the applicant was informed. Through conditions of approval on the project, during the review of improvement plans in twenty nineteen, during review of the final map. And during the present review of the building permit of the location of the fencing needed to be brought into compliance. Um, prior to installation and that the final approval of the location would be determined during this building process. The second appeal point filed by the applicant means that the development service director. Has determined that the rear fence for these lots is to be located five and a half feet from the rear property lines. Is ultimately a taking of the rear five and a half feet in each lot. Owners of these two lots will be required to be notified that the rear fences could be required to be moved and additional four and a half feet into the property at their expense. Increasing the taking to a total of ten feet at the back of it. In response to this, firstly, the applicant designed the subdivision project. And prepared, signed and executed the recording of the final map, which created the Farmstead subdivision. Which included the ten foot public utility easement on South Street side of lots one and two. The public utility easement is recorded on the title and as such, recorded documents will be disclosed. To the potential buyer, it's part of the purchase in agreements, and so they will be aware and if they're. Not willing to accept the public utility easement in that location, there, it was their discretion not to purchase. It is also indicated on the reported map that the P U E is for public purposes. And that it must be kept clear of structures, for the exception of lawful fences, we discussed that a few slides ago as well. Um, should any structure, including a lawful fence, impede the city or another public agency. From accessing any facilities within that public utility easement that they need to access, those structures, including lawful fences, will be removed. That is the standard acknowledgement and the reason for the publication of the public utility easement, it was provided easement rights. And in summary of that discussion, identity easement by the lawful property owner, thanks the applicant. As part of their proposed development that was approved by the city at their request, does not constitute a taking of private property. Continuing the adopted standards uh, by the city or engine standards. Do prohibit the location of fences within the public utilities and so on. However, section six seventeen sixteen oh five oh does permit the city engineer. There is me, the discretion to consider approval of a taller fence up to sixty tall within that ten foot setback of a street side yard. Um, again, provided that it doesn't conflict with utility or other easements and those are previously covered. Our engineering staff reviewed the specific circumstances of these particular lots. And made a determination that there could be an acceptable exception for a six foot fence located at that five and a half feet back. Which would be within the ten foot street side setback, but it could be acceptable because a lot of properties in town. Have property lines on the back of the sidewalk, so the arbitrary property line being. Beyond the landscape strip, there's not going to be a safety concern, and they also reviewed utility locations, the physical utility locations within that easement. And found that it would be okay to be located here from an engineering perspective. Um, so again, that would, the proposed exception would establish the size location at ten feet from the back of the sidewalk that is in the property line. And finally, it's noted that though this was not a point included in the appeal application, the applicant's many communications with staff. Has noted a concern that the rear property or the rear yard of these homes would be. So small, very small, based on the footprint and locating the fence by not be further in from this, from the exact property line. And so it's noted that the design of the single family homes is wholly within discretion of the developer, they're not influenced or required to design them. Of any size or shape by the city. Uh, so the applicant has designed the homes that they submitted the building from their applications for. And they have every right and discretion to amend those if they would like to offer a rear yard that is larger um, than they proposed. There was an established conditional installment of plan development for the project, the Farmstead subdivision. And it was approved with a requested ten foot setback, which is reduced from the standard lot one zoning district requirements. Uh, so that was again, a fair request in the design offered by the city for that ten foot rear yard. And then they proposed the design of the homes to fit on the lots as they proposed of it. Uh, so setbacks are at the minimum required distance from property line to the house. The city doesn't have any requirements for the distance between fence and. Um, in conclusion, we've reviewed the request from the applicant to place the six foot. Fence along South Street property lines on lot one and two, and through the staff's view, particularly the engineering division's review. That, that that could create a potential safety hazard and is in effect with an established for the utility season. Staff have proposed an acceptable solution that staff is comfortable with to the applicant. Um, the applicant. Uh, is not in agreement with that acceptable solution, he's filed appeal. The applicant requests the planning commission consider their request to place the fence on the property line and overturn the director's determination. Um, to, to allow that fence to be placed on the property line rather than what's. Staff, staff's recommendation, however, is to deny the appeal, to affirm staff's determination and interpretation of municipal code. And then finally to direct the applicant to revise their building permit applications for lots one and two. To include a response to all the comments provided by the city, including showing the fence location on the plans. But showing right fence location to be placed no closer than five and a half feet from the lot. We outlined options for the finding commission of staff report, and that uh, they are to adopt a resolution denying the appeal twenty three four dash three. With the findings continuing in the draft resolution, that is staff's recommendation, however, the planning commission could also adopt a resolution. For the appeal and reversing the determination of staff. Um, with findings established at the planning commission through the discussion, or if you have any further additional information or clarification, you could of course continue without it. But then I'll be answering your question. Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission?
Yes, uh, having an engineering background, so my question is, the developer had enough time. And you know with all the folks that needs to do that, right?
The other staff's belief, yes, and we do have our engineers up here as well, there's a couple of questions, but yes, we believe that the applicant. Through letters to staff, communications with staff, uh, throughout this process have. Had the ability to understand the code conditions, their conditions on their project and the requirements for some segments.
Okay, the second question, this is not the first question for the developer to do.
It's not the first construct of the developer, it is the first homes proposed in this subdivision, but.
All right, thank you.
Were you gonna be able to?
Of course, yeah, now I'm actually available to get any questions.
Yes, this is Dylan Albert, our assistant engineer. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, there are, there's no direct code that probably just never, uh, used by their folks to figure out how to do this thing.
That's correct, so there is no um, a direct code and that's why I can pull up or if you, you have the attachment on the slide, we can run through it. Um, but it was based on two codes that um, uh, any manager referenced. And then interpretation was made from those to be assisted with um, like situations um, regarding um, side yard lots and setbacks.
And those codes were um, available, but uh, prior to the discussion?
That's it, they're on the uh, on the city.
But the developer was aware of all this coverage, uh, so, you know, I have a scene. And there's existing property line for the three bills of cottages, the houses are building the. Although to the point, there's three, uh, three lots, right that way, um, does that one share the same property line for your property line?
It, it does, let me confirm if you're.
It doesn't share the same rear part, or I, I guess, I understand the question, but it, they share um, the western property line. But I understand the question, is, is it in alignment?
Uh, so if you can pull up um, let's shoot into this. Uh, the sheet where you have the. Uh, so that red line that you'll see on um, I guess, uh, Pedro, which is uh, the north side of the subject lots. Is the property line for um, lots going to the Farmstead subdivision, that continuation of the black line moving east nor or west. Uh, is, is, is the consistent property line to the cottages, um, and upon site visit, it was measured from. The fence line running parallel with the back of the block, it was also uh, ten feet from the back of the wall, um, so staff's recommendations was. A consistency with the.
So at the time when they submitted the blueprint, that was obvious that what they uh, they're supposed to do.
Uh, with, if I disaspirate clarification, you say blueprints to even like the improvement plans, the civil improvement plans?
Yeah, I mean, no, I mean, the um, the map of uh, how it's ever gonna look like.
Uh, so are you talking about the engineering phase? Okay, so when they submitted the civil improvement plans, um. There was a comments letter um, from August six point nineteen, I'll just read it verbatim. Uh, says additionally, please remove the fence from the P U E on the improvement plans for lots one and two, which are the subject lots. Once the plot plans for these lots are submitted, which is the stage that we were at in July last year, um, when staff made the comments regarding the fence. Once the plot plans for these losses are submitted, we will revisit the fence location for proper approval, please add an early plans explaining the situation.
I just have one question on the, the safety concerns, can you speak a little bit about those?
Uh, so for the safety concerns, it, it would be based on um, the site distance as you're coming up um, to the intersection. And so with South Street being, I, I believe is classified as um, I don't know if it's quite an arterial, it may be, I would have to double check in, in our. The recent traffic study that was initiated, or maybe, I think the general plan update also identifies um, street classification. But with that being a heavily trafficked um, area, um, as well as uh, there's been multiple complaints regarding. Uh, the safety of children crossing that and you see um, most people, I don't know if it is that intersection, maybe, but there was some uh. Uh, signage placed in the middle of the street to help um, verify vehicles that this is a school, a common school crossing area. And so that was the reason um, we want the most, most amount of site distance as possible to avoid.
I was thinking about probably children and families up. Thank you. Do we have any other questions?
Is, is the fence up or?
Uh, it is not, so the fence won't go up until the plot plan and the building permits are um, approved and then they can start construction.
I will now open the public hearing at seven on nine P P M. Staff, do we have a presentation from the applicant on this item? The applicant is.
General commissioners. So staff is requesting that you deny our appeal for two major reasons, one because of a public. Safety sideline hazard, and secondly, because uh. Four years after our engineering was approved for the eternity map. The engineering standard was changed in two thousand and nineteen in November, on November the fifth. It was by a fancy Kingly Horn firm, firm from a hundred miles away, and they added a thing. A paragraph F, you've got a copy on it, in there, that said, no fencing uh, on P U E's. Prior to that, fencing was allowed on P U E's. Our lots are fifty two feet deep, and if. Engineering wants, and planning wants to take ten feet away. Our, our, our lots will now become forty two feet deep. And my second exhibit, which is uh, figure six. From the staff report, if you look at that. Apart from our rear fences, they'll want our side and front fences also set back ten feet. Our, our, built our fence line, not our building line, but our fence line. Will now reduce lot one to roughly fifty percent of the square footage. Where going, so we and whoever buys that when we build the home is going to be paying property taxes on. Twenty percent if it's just the rear fences, and fifty percent if it's also the side fence on lot one. They're not, there's gonna be a six foot fence there, it's gonna separate them from. From those ten feet that they're paying property taxes on, and um, uh, they can't use it. And staff has the gall to look you in the eye and say, that's not a taking. And what's the purpose of the P U E? The, the public utilities have been installed, there's an exhibit there I have, that P G and E put their conduits. Under the inside uh, sidewalk line. That's five, the P G and E lines are six feet away from the rear property line. Who's gonna take care of those ten feet? Is the owner now gonna get a notice from the city to walk all the way around? And take care and maintain the landscaping there and the trash that collects? and take care and maintain the land landscaping there and the trash that collects there? And he, and he can't use it? So, I understand I've only got five minutes, staff has unlimited time. So I put together my, my presentation, I put all the exhibits together. Um, I can run through the major items. The, there's, there's no sideline issue. The city engineering has no sideline development standard or schematic. Look up the internet, the city of Millbrae has one. And they require on that diagram that I gave, thirty-five, a thirty-five foot triangle from the corner of the curves. And in Millbrae, they don't need any side distance if you've got a stop sign. There's a stop sign where Brennan Way comes into South Street, there's a four-way stop sign on South Street with the intersection of um, West Side Boulevard. Our fences don't need to align with the existing fence that's on lot thirty-eight. The reason there's a five and a half foot setback on the back of lot thirty-eight is because if you look at that, that picture uh, in exhibit nine, there's a irrigation control system sitting there. And rightly so, you have a, you have a um, the uh, controller, it, that needs to be placed somewhere for safety reasons and access, it's placed in the P U E. And so, just like in other uh, controllers around town, the fence there is set back. But if there's no need for that, why, why would the fence have to be set back? The director made a. May I keep going or do I?
Are you almost uh, done with your thought? You wanna finish your thought?
Well, I, I'd like to just address the four or five other things, meaning just, just to name them rather than to go into them in detail I have in my, in my written presentation. So, the director somehow rather misunderstood and said, you can't, you can't put your fence up against the sidewalk. Well, he didn't realize and didn't pay enough attention to say, to to see that in fact, there's already four and a half feet of landscaping that we have to put in between the edge of the sidewalk and the property line. The, we granted in two thousand and eighteen, we granted an easement to the city because the subdivision next to us, the cottages, had to put in their P G and E lines to get to their property. So we provided an easement and we specifically put in there that a lawful fence could be put in the P U E. Why would we offer that and lose ten feet of our property? And the lawful part of it is to do with the municipal code that has a provision that certain types of fencing are prohibited, corrugated uh, um, uh, sheeting, uh, this kind of uh, electrical fences and so on. So in our easement lawful comment that in fact is a, that, that a fence could go in there, but it would have to be of suitable material. The um.
About one more minute.
But, the, the revised engineering standards came in in, on the fifth of November, two thousand and nineteen. Our tentative map and our conditions of approval were approved four years before that. You go through the list of exhibits I have, everything says you can put a fence in a P U E. It's on the condition of approval, it's on the final map, it's on the statement of owners. Uh, the municipal code in the city has about five or six codes that say, once you've got your uh, your conditions of approval and your tentative map, that's, you can't, you can't pass an ordinance and go back retroactively and overrule us. And I've listed those.
Thank you, thank you for taking time to explain, it'd be great, um, you need to move on.
Okay, well, I've got a couple, talk from law courts, but if you alternate up or, or are interested in knowing, I'm, I'm available, thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have a?
We do not have public comment, however, we, we would like to note for the record that we have written comments from Alex and Ingrid Seidler. Um, copies have been provided to the planning commission and copies are found in the lobby.
Thank you, and I will now close the hearing at seven eighteen. Now, is there any discussion and deliberation from the commission?
No. I guess I do. I guess the staff have overview on, and I directly thought.
It would have been most appropriate during the public hearing, but I would prefer to the restroom. If you want, since people, the applicant would recommend to reopen the public hearing and then ask your questions.
Okay, alright, I was just curious.
You want, we can, okay, maybe you can state your concern or.
I just, the applicant did not uh, comment on the law and the compromise of the staff.
Thank you for that. Anybody else, any other questions or comment? Is there a motion on the site? Can you see the, the? Yes, please.
Yeah, on this one, the um, it is sometimes a little confusing when you're through the eight. I don't feel.
Right.
To deny something, so if you could just um, either indicate which option you're, you're willing to approve or we can help you with that as well.
Okay, yeah. That was my thinking, whether approving or denying the. The not feel, okay. So one would be adopt the resolution of denying the appeal, which is your recommendation. The second would be adopt the resolution approving the appeal on reversing the termination of staff. And the third is continue the item request more recognition. Is there a motion? And what is it? Yeah, yeah, it's all three of us.
I'm, I'm thinking about it, um. I understand the frustration of the developer, um, so what I would like to do and, except for this, um, but I would suggest, uh, I would like to see a timeline of, of the events that happened and where the votes, where the compromise gets happened, all the offers that go down on the timeline from the beginning to the end. And that way will give us an idea if the uh, the developer had more than one chance to understand what he or she had to do.
Well, then I'll just say from what was presented by staff, I thought they gave the timeline. And they provided.
I'm just looking for a view for me.
Okay.
Uh, and yes, I mean, in the writing, you know, but if, if you.
You wanted visual picture?
Yeah, a visual picture.
Okay. But I think, okay.
Because, I mean, the question is, who was aware of the code? When was the developer aware of the code? Where the code?
Okay.
Okay, and then when does, when did the compromise happen? And why? And why not? Why did the developer not want to do the compromise? Because obviously the original one is not gonna happen, so this code is there. They're not gonna have that fence next to them, you know, the developer. So, so uh, so there was a compromise offered by the staff. So I wanna know the defense that went back and forth between the staff and the current developers.
You want a timeline?
Timeline, like a view timeline, most of like a chart.
So, and even if the staff already gave the compromise and gave opportunity.
Yes, um, uh, that's my personal opinion, I think it's worth it to investigate a little more.
Okay.
Uh, uh, at the end, we wanna make sure that it's happened.
And we're there.
We'll go over the, exactly.
What do you think?
So we mostly continue the item, considering it's not.
Okay, so there's a motion to continue the item and request additional information clarification, uh, there's second.
I second.
Oh, I'm gonna make sure the motion. You made the motion, so we wouldn't need a second. I made the motion.
Sir.
Okay. All of those in favor?
Sorry about the confusion.
Okay, anyone opposed, no abstain, okay, motion carries. So we're gonna spend more time on that, okay. Item five point five, uh, can I ask a question? And apologize that I didn't uh, think about this before, seeing the children here and the families. Thank you for being here and being so patient. In the future, when we see that, is, do we have the ability to put the item first so that they're not waiting?
Yeah, you have the discretion.
I'm so sorry. I apologize, it's that, yeah, that, I get it, and that. You, you all have been so patient. Uh, five point five, conditional use permit twenty twenty-four dash one, eleven forty-nine Powell Street, Little Tree Community, Micro School, there's another staff report.
Of course, thank you, and while the presentation pulls up, I will apologize to the public regarding the order, however, I typically order them um, based on my staff first leaving than myself. And the reason that this one was placed last is because all four items previously actually have been continued in public hearings from previous meetings that weren't able to be held. So those applicants had to wait, but that is why this one is a new one um, to the commission agenda, but normally I decided get people out and, and ones of most interest out as fast as we can. Alrighty, so item five point five is a conditional use permit twenty twenty-four dash one, file by Sandra Schler for eleven forty-nine Powell Street. There is a proposal to establish, um, if we could click on this, please.
You not see?
Can you click on the pathways? And the project again is located at eleven forty-nine Powell Street, this is Nash Road and Powell across from the high school. The applicant is proposing to establish a micro school within an existing building that was formerly serving as a church. It is a twenty-seven hundred and little bit square foot existing building for conversion into a two classroom micro school for serving first through sixth grade students. And of, about forty students aging, ranging in age from three to eleven across those two classrooms. There are restrooms proposed as well as the installation of a compliant three-year-long fashion closure and other improvements to the site, including eleven parking spaces, five space spaces, uh, nineteen and five, or nineteen point seven percent land sweeping, which is above and beyond our requirements, and it will be pretty standard school operation hours, Monday through Friday, seven forty-five to three thirty. Here is the site plan again at the corner of Nash and Powell, has a one-way circulation of access, again, with those diagonal parking spaces for parents and the staffing to the party. The applicant is proposing, oh, no, no real exterior elevations, we just some enhanced paint and the installation of some fencing, so here's the existing elevations. This is the front elevation to the west on Powell Street. Uh, the rear elevation of the building, north and south. The applicant's conditional use permit has been reviewed for compliance with our general plans of ordinance, has been found to be consistent with our old town residential zoning district. And the way use is allowed within there and as proposed, as we call the requirements of the zone ordinance for this use. With that, that was short and simple, short and sweet. The planning commission, we've identified four options for you tonight. The first is staff's recommendation, which is to adopt a resolution approving the conditional use permit twenty twenty-four dash one, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution that was attached as far as your staff report. The planning commission could also adopt a resolution approving the conditional use permit with any modifications to the findings and conditions of approval, as you might so see fit. You could deny the proposed project, or you could of course continue regarding the question additional clarification for application from staff, and again, we are recommending approval.
Thank you, do we have questions from the commission? Thank you, I will open the public hearing at seven twenty-eight, staff, and we have a presentation from the applicant. It says a power point. It should say applicant, so on this item, and I apologize, I'm not, I'm not sure if the applicant's there, and would you have to say?
That's okay, you're welcome to come up, you'll have five minutes to sit.
Maybe with your, your signing.
Yeah.
Wanna show your signings? We all made them. Come up, come up with the signs. This is your presentation. You all wanna uh, like, spread out so you can see your beautiful artwork? And oh, there you are.
But at this time.
I'm like Sandra Schler, I'm here tonight with my co-founder, some staff members. Families and students of our school. I've lived in Hollister my entire life, and I just recently started working with some wonderful Montessori teachers and most amazing families in Hollister. We are trying to build the first intentionally diverse nonprofit Montessori school so that we can provide affordable child-centered Montessori education in a beautiful environment to all families, no matter what their socioeconomic background is. Uh, we believe strongly that whole child education should be a right and other privilege. We don't allow any government funding, rather we provide scholarships, discounts and individual tuition plans based off of um, teachers donate their time, teachers donate their own finances, families to fundraising, we apply for grants and um, everybody contributes to the community and we go out there and contribute to the larger foster communities. And so it's our goal to show the children how to make the world a better place first through ourselves than our smaller community in the map of communities. Um, in the past few years, Hollister has seen a huge rise in new houses. Um, that brought in need for more childcare and more school. And we recently found out that a long-term preschool and childcare center, little wave of preschool is going to be closed. That school provides seventy-five children with care every single day. And so with a situation that was already strained, now women and families in Hollister really have a hard time finding a place to put their children. Um, we want to provide that place so that we can foster stronger by providing a community where the parents can drop their children off and know that their children are safe and loved. They were, the children are getting the attention, the time and the development and support that they need. Um, so that the families can focus on their jobs and we can focus on the children, mature, we can focus on the community, or the rest of us. And so with that in mind, we are here to ask you today to please approve the conditional use permit for letting from nine Powell Street and um, one of these two.
Of course, you still have time.
It's important to me to, it's, I'm to the insight, because I love listening to you. For anybody I do work with, but so. So, I think you should approve really seriously.
How about any, any of the artists, anything you want to say? They, they say it to their art. Thank you, thank you, beautiful artworks, beautiful presentation. Do we have um, public comment?
Our first speaker card was for actually from Sandra Schler, which you just spoke. Our second speaker is uh, Coin Adragma. So, also just spoke.
Okay, thank you. Not my share, I was just hoping that we also have a seat, you know, and copies were provided, this is from Alexandra Menchus Morris. And so that would be put back with the secret, you know, so. Thank you, and I will now close the public hearing at seven thirty-two E P M. So we have discussion and deliberation on this?
You know, just.
Any question or objection, mostly, there's not green space, but there is still a temple area.
I believe there is a playground area, um and as mentioned in the staff board, there is a a significant percentage of landscaping on the site. That obviously includes some landscaping, that's not really playground landscaping, but there is enough of it. This is an awesome one to the to have the broad, this is our. Our first, you know, our first honey cushion, so this is really exciting. And as a mom who had her children at Little Bayor, I get it and and you know. Um daycare and in school is important there and so especially for those who I commute to San Jose. So we wanna have our children in the safest, any youth child activities, yes, let's do it for Hollister, so thank you for doing that. And thank you for the children that came, this is a part of you making a difference and speaking your piece and. And convincing, you know, people that make decisions to to do these positive things, so thank you for being one. Is there a motion on the side? All those in favor? Five, anyone opposed? No abstain, motion carries. And item six point one, planning commissioner reports. Um do the commissioners have any reports, say by me? Thank you all for being here. Okay, uh six point two, planning division reports, receive report from city staff on project updates. The staff, do you have any reports?
I don't know that I have any reports, but I'd just like to welcome Mr. Forrest Aluna and Commissioner Bass to the commission once again, and we're happy to have you and. This, I think this is a fun one.
Thank you. And the meeting is now adjourned at seven thirty-five. Thank you.